Continue with our meeting. The next item on our agenda is our rezoning application in a public hearing. The procedures of this, we will call a public hearing to order. Once that's completed, the application, the application will state the property owner, the address of the property, the land districts, the land lots, the map number. Give you all the physical information that you need. At that point, once that's completed, there'll be a presentation by the applicant or his or her representatives. The next procedure would be any comments by individuals in favor of the application, followed by comments by individuals in opposition to the application. Once that's completed, there will be a summary or rebuttal or final comments by the applicant. Upon the completion of that, we will close the public hearing and then we will take Each individual will be allowed to come up and speak if you'd like to. You will be allowed a three-minute time period. At the end of that time, it's already timed up. And when you come forward, if you'd please state your name and your address. And at this time, I would like to open our public hearing. And the rezoning application is for Edgar Houston Builder Incorporated, 8319 North Crossing Court, Fortson, Georgia. He would like to rezone 85.83 acres, max 045, part of parcel 014, land lots 86 and 115, land district 19. The location is three-tenths of a mile west of intersection of James Road and Fortson Road. He would like to rezone from A1 agriculture forestry to R1 single-family residential. The present use is timberland, the proposed use is single-family homes. The planning commission recommendation was approval, the staff recommendation was approval. Mr. Houston, if you would like to present us with your information.
Are we able to copy or be able to view what you're passing out to?
You can get copies later.
Not now.
We'll have your copies.
I'll show it to you. If you've got an afterword, I'd like to see it. This one working?
Yes. Take this one here. Go in close to it.
All right. I'm Edgar Houston, Edgar Houston Builder. We are asking for this 85-acre tract that we own to be rezoned from R1 to R1. Thirty-two, two-plus acres homesites. As you can see, we're bordered on two sides by subdivisions. Our lots average, minimum in Harris County, is two-acre lots. Our lots will average 2.65 acres. Four, five of the lots that back up to us on Richson Road are 1.5 acres. Our smallest lot width is 125 feet, the minimum in Harris County is 90. Some of our smaller lots, two-acre lots, are 135 feet. But our average is 150 feet frontage. There's one flag lot that goes to a four-acre lot. We also have a 3.5-acre lot, a 4.75-acre lot, and a 7.5-acre lot. Most of these lots on the west side of the street will back up to a lake or creek which creates a natural buffer between us and the houses on Richson Road. We back up to two large landowners on the east side. As you can see, there are only four. No, there are five. Five lots are backed up to the east line. The houses on this property on the east side of these two are approximately 580 feet from our back property line. Our smallest depth on that east side is 200 feet. Every lot besides that is larger than that depth. One of the tracks on the east side that's 540 feet from their house has a dam and a lake which is 220 feet off of our property line. Our street is approximately 3,391 feet long. Richson Road, the subdivision that abuts us all on the west side, is 6,515 feet long. So we're about half of what Richson Road is. We feel like this development is a continuation of light developments in the area. It should be accepted as it meets all criteria in the Harris County ordinance for single-family residences.
Any questions for Mr. Houston?
Pennies on Barnesville Road, then turn right onto Walton Street.
No questions? Is there anyone in favor of the application that would like to come forward and make a remark? There any individuals in opposition of the application that would like to come forward and make any remarks? So please raise your hands. We'll start over here on the right side of the room, you're on the left side, and we'll try to work across the room in an orderly fashion. And whenever you come forward, if you please would state your name and address, and just keep in mind we'll have a three-minute time period. If you would please come forward.
I'm Jeff Pritchard. I live at 1808 Fortson Road, Fortson. My property backs up to the south end of the proposed rezoning area there. Got a few notes, so forgive me if I get a little bit uncomfortable. I'm not used to speaking in front of crowds or visiting people of authority. The only person I know when they talk to me that's of any authority is my wife. I usually don't fare well in those arguments, so I hope I do a little bit better job convincing you people to go along with what I've got to say here. I'm sure everybody expects me to stand up here and bash Houston Homes, and that's not what I'm here to do. What I'm here to do is to convince you people to deny the rezoning request, and I hope to give you some information that would allow that to happen. And if you don't deny it, at least table it until you've had time to adequately kind of absorb what some of the other developments that have, that are now in our area, some of the impact that they may have. I'm up here speaking on behalf of some of my family, my friends, my neighbors. We came to the county 25 years ago, and the reason we came up here was to enjoy the land, to hunt fish, our land property, to build quality, custom homes, things that are unique. We came up here to get away from bumping elbows with our neighbors. And I say we don't wire our neighbors, we have plenty of good neighbors, but we've got space in between hills and trees and woods and those type things. We came up here to get away from the sprawl. We came up here to benefit from the quality schools that we have, from the level of teacher to student ratios. We came up here to enjoy some of the sports programs that we have. We came to be a part of a true community. I want to circle back to what I mentioned just moments ago about the other developments. There are several developments that have been built in our area. And while, as of right now, we don't see the effect that some of those are having on us, other than maybe some traffic issues in the morning and late in the evenings, people going to come to work. But we may not know what we don't know yet. What are some of these developments going to bring, two, three, four, five, 10 years from now? Environmental concerns, Standing Boy Creek backs up to this property, I'm not sure what some of the runoff is going to do when you go, you know, if you go in there and kind of take all the trees away from that. Mr. Houston mentioned, and I'll hand this out to you if it's okay, Mr. Houston mentioned there are several light properties in the area.
While you're looking at that, just one of the light areas that he just mentioned. Excuse me?
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Glover. I live at 438 Richardson Road in Stony Creek subdivision. Like Jeff said, you know, a lot of people move to Harris County to get away from the hustle and bustle of the city life. And I feel like since we have been living in Harris County for like the six, last six, almost seven years, there's been a huge influx in subdivisions that are being developed. Houston Homes are going up in several areas across the county, and I'm concerned for traffic, for schools that my kids attend, the teacher-to-student ratio. The parents, I mean, Mr. Houston makes beautiful homes, but the subdivisions just being on clear cut. You know, you're taking away all the trees that people are moving up to this area for. Just recently, one of the biggest things that I've had an impact with, with another subdivision that's going on, is runoff. My property backs up to a pond, and despite multiple contacts to Harris County Inspection Office and the Environmental Protection Division and County Commissioner, I still do not feel like people are taking my concerns or any of the other neighbors that property backs up to this pond and is messing up our property. And I'm concerned that with putting this subdivision in, how it backs up to Standing Boy Creek, that the same thing could happen and get runoff from that subdivision as well. So I just ask that y'all consider the rezoning of this from agriculture to housing. Let's keep Harris County what people are moving up there for. Let's keep it where people have rooms in between the houses, there's wooden lots, and, you know, let's keep the schools and student-teacher ratio at a minimum. Thank you.
My name's Frank Halkoska. I live at 563 James Road. I moved to Harris County from Muskogee County three years ago. I moved for the exact same reason all these people right here moved here, for a better standard of living. My concerns living on James Road, I live on the corner of James and Burdette, and the increase in traffic is phenomenal. I was trying to get out onto 315 the other day and had to count 42 cars going by before I could get out onto 315 of the interstate. So my concerns are not only the traffic, but I think the citizens here want to know what the impact is going to be on law enforcement with the Grove and the other development that's going on the other side. So what's the sheriff have to say? Because with increased housing, apartments, there's going to be increased crime. Okay? What's the impact from the fire department? When something in the Grove catches on fire and my house catches on fire, are we going to have the assets available to be able to get there and put these fires out? What's the impact on EMS? What's the impact on traffic? I think all these considerations need to be addressed before we grant rezoning. I'm not against what he's trying to do, I'm not against him for making a living, but I moved to Harris County, I'm retired, and I think I've got a right to know this information, and you have a right to know that information, before you make a decision on granting him the zoning. Thank you.
My name is Stacy Pritchard. I also live at 1808 Fortson Road. Just want to reiterate a couple of things. In a meeting that we attended a couple of weeks ago, Mr. Houston made a comment that we didn't want other people to have what we have. And that's not the case at all. We are really pro-development, but we are pro-faultful development, and we do want people to have what we have in Harris County. But what we have and what Mr. Houston is offering in these subdivisions that he continues to build one after another is not what we have. The only thing that we have in common with what those people, what we have and what other folks don't have, and what he will bring, is a zip code, and that's it. We will all share the same zip code, and that is, that's the only common thing that we will be able to share. So again, we're not against pro-development, we're just for some pro-quality development. We're just really asking here for some reason with this. And the flyer that Jeff gave you guys, what that really shows is you will see that on the other, on the side of 185 there where you can really see the lot, that is Hart Preserve. Hart Preserve was cut in there, you can see those lots. Every tree was cut down, they look like shotgun lots, and there's a little, there's a nice big home sitting on those lots. Across 185, where you can see the roads, that's Poplar Place. Poplar Place was built, trees were maintained and kept, they were clear cut, so you can just sort of see the difference. So a lot of what Mr. Houston brings in on some of these developments is bringing, coming in and clear cutting those new subdivisions. And the question is, is that what we continue to want Harris County to look like? You know, I think we want it to look like Hickory Hollow, I think we want it to look like Dogwood Forest, I think we want it to look, you know, like Poplar Place where it's got some, there's some character there. So, you know, I asked you guys, and I know that this is Ms. Langston's, you know, district, but I asked Mr. Grant, Mr. Zarn, Ms. Andrews, and Mr. Langley on the phone, you know, is this what, you know, how would your constituents want you to proceed if this were coming in your districts? So just a few comments there, and again, you know, we want the developments, we just want them to be quality developments, we want people to have what we have, but we do not think that this is giving other folks the opportunity to have what we have in Harris County.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name's Brad Anderson, I live at 6004 Fortson Road. I'm kind of like the others, I'm not anti-growth, I'm pro-growth, I want people to come here. So I kind of wrote down some of the points. As far as growth is concerned, growth of any kind, whether it be private, government, consumer, commercial, at too much of an accelerated pace or too fast will cause multiple issues and costs that will not surface or be recognized until well into the future, severely eroding as initial profits or gains, especially in this county. In this case, impacts to include cost of infrastructure such as roads, bridges, public safety, fire, EMS, and the sheriff's department, schools, and public services. Growth at an accelerated rate can negatively affect quality of product versus quantity and lack of being able to service the product already rolled out, which the product is homes. In this case, the quality of some of the homes already built is in question. Foundation problems, plumbing problems, electrical issues, just to name a few, have been raised in great numbers. The lack of resources or unwillingness to address these issues is a failure to back your product, which I've seen a lot of reviews on the homes that have been built there recently in the subdivisions. Moderate sustained growth is always the healthiest green of business for government activity because pauses are built in to stop and evaluate all aspects, good and bad, so adjustments can be made along the way. That's what sustained growth is about. A product of good growth, there has to be competition. When I ride a road, I always see pretty much primarily one builder, especially if I heard it. So competition is needed, it cannot be monopolized. Competition leads to better quality, lower cost, and an overall better product. The perception in this case is that the primary builder here has a monopoly on its growth in the county, that's just the perception when you ride a road. The Harris County atmosphere, like they refer to, most people move to Harris County, even if it's two acre plus acres of land, with trees and adequate road frontage is what Harris County is known for. Many of these new developments are totally clear cut, as you referenced too, do not have hardly any road frontage, some of the houses are built really close to the road, you only have 60-foot of road frontage, and in the backyard is like really skinny and And that just doesn't make for it to be very cosmetic and practical. So my main theme is just, never slow down growth because you're going to have a lot of problems if you don't.
My name is Dana Newton, and I live at 52 Brent Haven Way in Fortson, that's in the Stony Creek subdivision. I don't know much about pots and land and all the fancy graphs and stuff you've got, but we're a little different, my husband and I moved out to the county, actually, we bought our house in Sandy Creek in August of 2019. And we did it because we love the county and the space and the breath for our children to play and ride bikes and be able to walk and enjoy all the things that county life has to offer. My parents have lived here since 1999. Now we regret our decision. Since we moved into our house, there are now three very large developments that have encircled our neighborhood with thousands of houses going in. The traffic has more than tripled. I didn't bring my eight-year-old up, she can tell you about how we almost had a head-on T-bone collision at the Mountain Creek intersection, trying to go to school one day. And all the buses were there and everybody stopped because it was probably the scariest moment in my life, and I didn't expect that. I know that can happen anywhere, but the traffic wasn't this bad. But with all the developments going in, my husband, as a law enforcement officer, is the first one to tell you, we're scared with all the new people coming and all the influx. The sheriff's department, I'm guessing, isn't tripling in size, the fire department isn't professional, so now that we're adding all of these hundreds of families and their children, who's going to protect them? Who's going to put out the fires? Who's going to handle calls? Who's going to be there within minutes? Not Harris County. And that's scary, that we're willing to add all of these individuals without first adding all the services you need to protect those individuals, because that should really be our first thought. So now we're stuck with a house that we bought, that we loved, and we're really excited to be moved to, and is now landlocked by all these great new developments and all these great people that are going to come to the county after the same thing we all wanted, but now we've cheapened the experience for everyone. And I'm sad for that. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having us meeting. My name is Thomas McNerney. I live at 384 Elmwood Drive in Poplar Place. I think it's unrealistic to think that Harris County will not expand along the I-185 corridor. That's going to happen, and I think everyone should understand that and be realistic about that. Having said that, I think there should be very strict management of this impact. I live in Poplar Place, as people have said, when the developers developed Poplar Place, they didn't cut down all the trees, they didn't clear cut. That makes a significant difference in the nature of how we live. The second thing is, you know, also, I live in Poplar Place, I'm retired now, but when I was working, it wasn't before any of these additional subdivisions, it was difficult to make a left-hand turn at time to go to work, because cars were, you know, people were taking their kids to schools, to those schools on 315, and they were coming towards 185 to go into Columbus to go to work. So it was very difficult to get out at those times, so I had to go in really early to work, or I had to go in late. So I look at the new subdivision Mr. Houston has built, it's basically across from Poplar Place. If they're going to take their kids to school, you know, on their own as opposed to the buses, but even the buses, they have to turn left. There is no, you know, there's a lot of traffic now, turning left is becoming impossible, even out of Mountain Hill Road. I see, you know, in a few mornings I've been out there, I see school buses just stacked up, they can't turn left easily. You know, so unless we're putting in traffic circles or we're putting in traffic lights at those intersections, we're going to have significant traffic problems. I would suggest, or I've already suggested when the Grove came around, that this county should have impact fees like Peachtree City did. Why? Because you need to fund water, police, fire, at a time. And we have not implemented any kind of impact fees, and builders are coming here from Muskogee County because they run out of room, and now they're just building here. And they don't care really about Harris County, they just want to build. I would say that at this point, we should have impact fees for any future building, and quite frankly, I think we should have more time on building until such point as we know how we are going to develop along this corridor. And I appreciate your time and I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My name's Melissa Bogus, and I live at 16 Signal Court, Hamilton. My dad lives in Stony, the neighborhood right here, and he moved here about four years ago to be close to us, that's from my mom's house away, loves his house, and he's putting his house on the market. And, you know, he's 77 years old. I, I'm so upset that he wants to move out of this county that I've lived in since 1991. I love it. And he loves his home, he loves his neighborhood, and now he's sandwiched in, and he's worried about driving and all the traffic at 77. You know, he's moving away from his grandchildren. You know, he's moving away from his grandchildren that he moved here to be around. He's not going to live in Harris County, he says, because the Grove is crazy and he's not happy with it. And it hasn't always been this way. It hasn't. It's, you know, I, my neighborhood, I think, I'm an acre and three quarters, but you can't, it's full of trees. My kids play in the woods every day. They build forts and they're cutting neighborhoods. It's not what we are known for. And I don't feel like that's what we want to be known for. I would just like to, I agree with the moratorium. We could stop this until we can figure out what we need to do. I'm not against growth, not at all, but I do think it needs to be controlled. That's just my saying. My dad didn't feel comfortable coming with COVID tonight if he were to have been here himself. Thank you.
Mr. Russell McGee, Ms. Bogus, D-O-G-G-E-S-S.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Berry. I live at six oh six Denny Road off Highway three fifteen east. I came just to hear what was going on here right now because I live in a short distance from where Mr. Houston has built two subdivisions right on three fifteen, pretty close to where I live. And this made a terrible impact on the traffic down there. And that's the main thing. It's not near as big as this complex looks like it's going to be to me. I'm just saying, with the roads you have over there, Fortson Road and three fifteen, you cannot handle the traffic. Having been a firefighter for almost thirty years, I understand what a slow response does if you call for an ambulance or a fire. So I would seriously consider not allowing this to go through. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Dave Diesel. I live at five twenty-six Richardson Road. And like most of these folks in the, in the meeting here, I moved to Harris County when I retired for a quality of life. And what I've seen on the developments right now around three fifteen, the traffic, as most people have said, is horrendous. Traffic lights are not going to be your answer or run routes. It is, you take your lapidial hands on someone's trying to get out. It's just that something. When you turn around and clear cut something, there is an erosion problem. There's no question about it. It happens because the earth takes the ground, takes the rainwater and naturally disperses. If you clear cut it, no matter how you want to channel it, it's going to have a problem. We bought our homes as an investment out here. We live on a little over two acres. I understand I'm not against growth. Growth is going to happen. But I think Harris County really needs to take a look how we do this and expand this correctly and not impact so many people so quickly. It's a sad, it's a sad thing for me. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Suzie Waddell, W-A-D-D-E-L-L, two D's and two L's. And I live in forty Dove Drive, Fortson, Georgia. I live in Dogwood Estates, Dogwood area. I love Harris County. My husband and I moved in nineteen ninety-three to Harris County. It has been just wonderful. I was raised in Escobee County and then moved down to Harris County. I love it here. But I'm getting scared. I'm getting afraid. Two things, three things really. Number one, when Houston built the Oak Hill section, there is just a section there that's complete. The frontage is on three fifteen. If I remember correctly, there's more acreage along down by the Pick Farm that still can be built on. And then back down on three fifteen as you go to East, uh, EC Park, there's another section there that's two, you go down two different little roads with little sections, but that's just the beginning. And they're putting in all the utilities and that is a mess down there. The traffic is horrible and it's just, we are, haven't even seen the Grove get started yet. And the traffic right now is unbearable. It's unsafe. It's scary. And I think that if Harris County is going to grow, it needs to go somewhere else. I got an email last night that Houston, just last night on my email, that Houston homes are building out by McGee Road on the other side of the county. That's going to be a nightmare too. I just wish you guys would really pray about it and consider not approving this because it's going to hurt our families. It's going to hurt our properties. It's just going to hurt us. It's a safety issue and it's frightening us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jimmy Hart. I live at sixteen ninety-two Fortson Road. The entire rear of my property backs up to Mr. Houston's development. I have a property, tell you, around forty acres, but all of it's going to be on the back. You know, I don't, I don't think, I don't think any of us sitting here expect you to vote it down. We know what the law is. I think it's already preordained. I think all of you have already made up your mind how you're going to vote. It's incredible. And the reason why is it's, it's not in Pine Mountain. It's not in Shallow and it's certainly not in Whiting Hall. It's right there where we live. The only council member that's not here, well, there's a little bit that's hooked into what Mr. Langston got, but most of it is Ms. Langston. You gentlemen are not even affected. And, you know, if they were building in Pine Mountain, I bet you wouldn't be against it and I bet you wouldn't either, Mr. Zerner. I don't know about Ms. Andrews, but all of this stuff, you know, it's all getting dumped on us. It's in front of us. We're the one that's catching it. And I went the other morning to Fortson Road, three fifteen and right there where the interstate, where you head south. Do you have any idea how many cars I counted getting the interstate going south to Columbus? And that in not hold, in fifty-five minutes, when I quit, eight hundred and sixty-four. That's how many cars was hitting that one particular thing. The stress is something else. Mr. Houston made the statement that nobody in his right mind would come out of the development he's going and take a left and go through Popular Place. That's not true. That's exactly the way they're going to go because they're closer to the interstate. And if they go and turn to the right and go to Fortson Road, there's a blind curve there and there's no red light. Something's going to happen, I'm certain. And the whole thing is just, I mean, there's no consideration given to the ones that's been there. I've been where I'm at for thirty years, probably longer than anybody in here. When I first, oh, you, that's Whiting Hall, though.
Sixty-five.
That's the one. But what I'm simply saying is this, you know, I wish you'd consider the fact, you know, that it don't affect any of y'all. The only one that it affects is actually her and us. And we hadn't even seen the effect of the Grove yet and what it's going to do. I mean, it's a tremendous development and there's already a lot of people in Popular Place who are unhappy with the drainage that's coming off of the Grove at this particular time. And several people, I even believe Brian's already been called a time or two about stuff coming into it which is drainage off of the Grove. That's not even over. I think, I don't know what you intended. I know what you're going to do. But what I'm saying is I think there should be a pause taken and look at it for a while and stick it and see how the traffic is going to go. Another thing is in my particular place, I've got a lake. The lake's about three acres and I raise catfish. And I don't think I'm going to be raising catfish when he gets in there and clear cuts that thing. And, you know, Mr., I know Mr. Houston. He seems like fine. I haven't even thought of getting him. But if you look at the development that we give you that you showed, which was the thing across there, Hart Preserve, which ain't got nothing to do with me, but if you notice Hart Preserve, look at where he clear cut that and went in and put these eighty houses in there. He cleared that. You walk into that, there ain't a tree in it. If you go into Oak Hill, you go into Oak Hill that he's building right now and what he's done is he clear cut a place for the road. And then after he got the road in, then he clear cut another hundred foot back to the wood line. Oh, a minute. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Megan Gunther. I live at thirteen seventy-nine Horns Mill Road. I used to live in this area. I'm no stranger to these meetings. I've sat in the same position as all these residents and asked and begged and pleaded for you to not approve the development. And that is the reason why I live on Horns Mill Road. I, we sold our house after twelve years. We live on Hamilton Mulberry Grove Road and we saw what was happening. Neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood being approved, traffic getting worse, taking a left onto three fifteen or Hamilton Mulberry Grove Road. We've talked about it lots of times. Nancy knows it. But taking our life in our hands, pulling out in front of traffic. Mr. Tim Alleby last week just posted a video of a drone shot of the school buses trying to take a left off of Mountain Hill Road on the three fifteen where they sat for twenty to twenty-five minutes before they all were able to get out. Anyone that is dropping their students off at Mountain Hill, at New Mountain Hill and having to take a left on three fifteen to go to Creekside, every parent has to do that and the buses have to do it. Traffic has gotten horrendous. We haven't even seen the beginning stages of what the Grove is going to do, Oak Hill and all these other developments. I've asked before for a moratorium on, on all of new rezonings until we get finished with what Wood PLC is doing and looking at the ordinances in the zoning and I'd ask for you to do that again. Though this is unlikely, I do support two acre minimums. I'm big and I'm definitely in favor of two acre minimums and I appreciate that Mr. Houston advised by those. I do know that he would push to be more like Howie in a county of fifty-one acre lots, but we do have a two acre minimum. So, but I do ask if you do approve it, and I'm not sure what Mr. Houston handed you today, but if we are going to approve it, can we put some kind of stipulation on the lot sizes? I did hear him talk about road frontage and size of the lots of these developments. Ms. Andrews, I've been at a meeting where you asked about the skinny lots. I was at the planning commission meeting two weeks ago when he presented this and he also presented the lots for Everly Lakes, the Phase Seven. And I saw those lots and that is not county living. There are, look like splinters. And people are having to go to Brian's office and ask for grievances or whatever they have to ask for to put outbuildings on there. And there's been, they're just so narrow. So if we are going to approve the lots and Mr. Houston came up here and talked about, and other people spoke about it, how he wants to give people what we have, let's make sure we actually are giving them what we have. A county that is safe, a county with good schools, with low traffic, with nice wooded lots, with space between our neighbors. I love neighbors, but we like our space here in Harris County. So let's make sure that we are giving that to them. So if we are going to approve it, I don't know if that is, but I would like to see some kind of talk about lot sizes. Thank you.
Is there anyone? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jany Anderson. It's J-A-N-Y. I live at sixteen oh four Fortson Road. My dad is in the back and my sister's over on this side, so we kind of all live there together. Standing Boy Creek runs between us. Mr. Houston referred to some of the bigger landowners that will back up to this property and we are those landowners. I just want to remind you guys that those of you that are sitting here, Ms. Andrews, Mr. Zerner, Mr. Grant, I agree with Dad. It's not going to be in your backyard, you know? I think I spoke early on, many moons ago, about the Grove when you were on the board at that time and you spoke about it and it wasn't in your backyard either, but you voted for it. You cannot imagine, if you're on three fifteen, what the Grove looks like at this time. There's not a tree hardly in sight. But I need to remind you guys that as you're sitting here, who put you in those seats? These people did. We voted for you. We voted for Ms. Langston. That's our community down there that you're building up, that the traffic is horrendous, that you can't hardly get out anywhere. I sat in traffic the other day for twenty minutes on three fifteen. I live on Fortson Road, half a mile down from it. It was absolutely ridiculous. I mean, we're your constituents. I don't feel like you're giving us a fair chance. You're forcing us into doing things like having to come to these meetings and pretty much beg and plead for you to even take any form of consideration in our opinions. It's, it's just, I mean, when does it stop and you take a pause? You know, and you just think, you know, is this right? You know, what can we do to make it better? I agree with these people. You know, it's not about growth. Everybody wants that, but it's got to be smart. And I'm not sure if we're really heading in that direction. I mean, with all the complaints, you know, they're all online. You can see it from the builder. I don't have anything against Mr. Houston. Don't know him. You know, I'm sure that some of those homes are fabulous, you know, but, you know, I, I don't want it to interrupt what my family has and what my children have and what my niece and my nephew and my children will inherit at some point. But you're forcing us into this situation because you won't take, you know, we put you in these seats to listen. You're here for the people, but it just doesn't seem like that at this point. I just ask you to consider, think about it. You know, think about us and how it reflects us. You know, when you come to these decisions, we just ask for your consideration. Help us out a little bit. We're willing to take a pause if you guys are. And I appreciate your time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Bless everyone, Mr. Houston, if you would like to close your final comments.
First, I'd like to say, you know, the Grove was done about ten years ago. Everybody didn't like it.
Doesn't make it right.
It, it doesn't ma, I, I don't say it was right, but the, the hat, the people, the council of Harris County voted it in back then and I guess it was nothing we could do to stop it. Then Mr., Mr. Hart gave me a picture of Hart Preserve, a development I did about two years ago. Hart Preserve was a, was deemed as a, what was, a conservation subdivision. We, and the reason we, it's called that, we did small lot, they let us do small lots. It was an experiment. I don't think it'll happen again. We built on a hundred, about two hundred acres. We built on a hundred and then we preserved a hundred acres around this subdivision permanently, a life, for your life, my life, everybody's life. That was, that was an experiment and I probably, I, I wouldn't do that again. I mean, Harris County won't let you do it again. The, the growth in Harris County is coming from the demand. Columbus doesn't have any more land to speak of. They, and everybody wants to come to the first interchange, which three fifteen was deemed as the growth corridor of Harris County in the last land plan years ago. So all the land north and south of three fifteen has been in the growth atmosphere for years to come. It's supposed to be the most dense populated part of Harris County. It just so happens you're right next to the first interchange out of Columbus, which that's the easiest to get to. A lot of the traffic on the, that I suppose Mr. Hart saw getting on the interstate, we got to realize all of the river, all of the people that live at the river come down to that interchange to get on. It, it's, then there are all these subdivisions that have already been in existence for years that on the east side. So you've got people coming from the west and the east getting on the interchange to go to work in Columbus. You know, I, I have a business and I have to rely on what is already on the books in Harris County, the ordinances. This, this thirty-two lots are going above and beyond. The ordinances, this, this thirty-two lots are going above and beyond what is in the ordinance. The width of the lots, the acreage, to, our average is two point five. The minimum is two. Our frontage is a hundred and fifty-plus feet, the minimum is ninety. We don't go in and clearcut on purpose. We go in nowadays, they make you clear for your second tank. And then if it fails, you got to clear for an extra fill line. And y'all, all y'all that live-
Could you please focus on us?
Yes. All of y'all that live have been here for a while, they didn't require that. And that's why you go in and it looks like you're clearcutting a place. Actually, you, you're putting a house site there, but then you gotta clear for two second tanks, so to speak. And just, it makes it look like you took all the trees. You know, I try to lea-, I try to get these lots and make them where leaf trees in between the houses. Most, most people that buy houses don't want big trees where they can fall on the house. They're scared to death of them. I left some beautiful oaks in the yard, front yard the other day. The buyer said, "Take them out." What do you do? What the buyer says. I don't, I'm not trying to run everybody, you know, out of Harris County. I'm sorry that the old gentleman wants to leave. I, I just think it's the, the growth is here now. If we have a downturn, it'll stop or recede for a while. But, you know, people, people want the two acre lots. They want, they want what all these people behind me have. And, you know, they're, they're demanding it right now.
Hey, would you please, they call out to get your opportunity to speak.
So it's, it's just, and I, I think we're within the guidelines of Harris County. And I ask you to approve it. Thank you.
Have the final comments from Mr. Houston are done. We will close this public hearing and take an action. Is there a motion? Or any discussion?
Yes, Andrew, I got a question. In the notes of the planning commission, I just indicated that Mr. Houston offered that he would pay for the water line extension to get two county water and handle the subsidy. Did not mention that in the item of my clarification.
Brian, could you give us a little clearer question?
Mr. Hart.
So it is required that the developers, the developers responsible for all utilities?
Yes. Harry, did you hear that the developers required to fund all utilities?
To connect to the existing line?
Yes, to connect to the existing line with developer funds. No county funds are involved. Correct.
I have some comments that I don't know if you want to add.
Oh, a motion? This subdivision has presented to us, meets all departments, and legally, you have to go forward. Are any, any kind of objections or problems?
That are raised by various departments, the Department of Kids, which includes the sheriff, Public Health, Community Development, School Board, none of those have communicated that this subdivision has a problem. Therefore, I, I think we don't have any other choice, and I make the motion to approve this subdivision with the understanding that the water line is at Mr. Houston's disposal.
That was a, that was a motion?
Here's a motion.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure, we started with, I'll say the motion so we can get it out to discuss. So, any discussion?
Yes, I have some things to say. First, Ms. Anderson, or is it Ms. Andrews? Here. I didn't vote on the Grove. I was school superintendent when that happened.
I didn't say that you voted on it. I said I spoke to you in regards to it while the time that you were superintendent.
But I just wanted to clarify that. I've been in Harris County sixty-five years. Moved here when I was six months old, nineteen fifty-five. I'm probably not a person that's been here longer than me. I've seen the growth come, and I jokingly said at times, the way you feel right now is how I felt all these years with all of the different people and growth and all of the things that have come with it, except we've gotten some really fine neighbors like those of you who sit here tonight. Hardworking people who look for a good quality of life and who want to come and, and work hard and have a great place for your children to go to school and to live. And I appreciate those of you who have moved here and who have fit into what we call the county mode. So I understand all of that. As I look at this subdivision, I do appreciate the fact that Mr. Houston has increased the width size in this particular development that he gave us a flat, that he, the lots are not as long and skinny and as we've seen in some of his developments. So I appreciate that he's looking at, at those kinds of things because that's what we're talking about in our new land notes that we are working on developing. I'm concerned that there is not water here, and I understand the developer will pay to take the water from where it is to this subdivision, and it will all be at his cost. But it leads me to thinking that we certainly are outgrowing our infrastructure because of the fact that there is no water, no county water there at this moment. And I did see the picture of the school buses backed up down the road. I can imagine with all of this, when you give me this picture and I see all the development and I, we have voted over and over for the rezonings and for the subdivisions because it is in our comprehensive plan that 315 will be the growth corridor and that there will be places in the county where we will maintain the agriculture and larger lot sizes. But down 315 will be the growth corridor. But I do agree with many of the comments tonight. When you talk about this doesn't impact me, yes it does. Harris County is my home. It impacts me. Whether it's in Eldersley where I'm elected, from Eldersley, Waverlin Hall, and Midland, this impacts me too. And my children and my grandchildren are here in this county, so it certainly does impact me. And I don't want you to think that any of us sit up here and think, well, it's not in our district, so it doesn't impact us because that's not our thinking. So having said that, I'm very much concerned that we are continuing a very fast pace of growth. And when I say that, I recall that when I was school superintendent, we were growing at a rate of four hundred houses a year. And now we're growing at a rate of two hundred houses a year. So this is not, this is not the fastest pace that we have grown. And the schools absorb that growth, and that's why you saw Creekside and Mulberry Creek and the additions to the schools and all of those things that we did during that time. We were accommodating that very large and very fast growth. But I hear what you're saying, and I too am concerned about the speed of our developments.
I would like to echo everything that Commissioner Andrews mentioned, including the fact that I've only been here thirty-eight years. And then Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that GDOT has been involved and has done some traffic studies in that area?
Yes, GDOT has been doing traffic studies all over the 315 corridor, from the interstate to Fortson and beyond. And they have required the developers to put in ACLD cell lanes that are existing now. And the engineer that I talked to this morning said, all the studies have been done, taking into consideration the buildout of the Grove, the apartments, the homes, Mr. Houston's developments that are being built now, that are on track to be built. And they said there's no further improvements required for the next ten years. So I find that kinda hard to believe from, but from DOT's point of view, who, who is in the business to move traffic. The infrastructure there now, the road infrastructure, the traffic signals are to their standards.
But not for Harris County, use what we're used to.
To, to GDOT standards, maybe not to local citizens' standards, for at least the next ten years. So.
There, there has been a study.
There's been numerous studies, numerous traffic studies, numerous signalization studies, numerous studies. But they're about two or three years old now. But they took into consideration all of these items. So, so that has been in play.
Any further discussion?
The only thing I would like to make sure everybody was aware of, we can't do a moratorium on this. It's, it's already there. So if we did a moratorium, this wouldn't, it wouldn't stop this. So, you know, I mean, as much as I agree that that's probably what we should have done months ago, we didn't. You know, and that's our fault. And I'll tell you this, it's my fault because I thought about it months ago, and I really didn't think we would be having this issue because I thought our land codes would have been done before now, and we would have been able to have this a little better situated. And, you know, then all of the stuff hit and we are where we are. So, you know, I'll take the blame on that one. I thought of it months ago. I didn't do it. That's my fault. But it, it's nothing on, it wouldn't affect this right now where we are at this moment in time. I do agree that, and that I think the growth should slow down. You know, I'm not even gonna say how long I've been here because, you know, my students and my ballplayers tell me I'm older than Methuselah, so there you go. And I do think it should slow down, and I agree with Commissioner Andrews. I do appreciate that Mr. Houston has changed the lot size and what we've talked about in the past of his developments. And I appreciate each and every one of you coming here, and y'all need to understand that I may not live down there, but my title is Harris County Commissioner. It's not Harris County High Mounts Commissioner. I'm all, I'm for all the counties. I mean, I teach school here. I'm for every student that's in there. So I have to live all over this county. There's no way I can be for one area or another. I'm trying to be for all the county and all the people, and I appreciate each and every one of you.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll take the vote. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Due to interpretation into the law, I hate to do it, but I'm gonna have to be in favor.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business we can?
I would like to have, to have a resolution that puts a moratorium on all new development until our new land use codes can be completed in March. So I would like to try to stop this situation from happening again until we get our land use codes updated as we have stated. That's what we were going to do. And as I said, I take the blame for not doing it early, but I'd like to do it then.
Are you talking about rezoning applications?
I'm talking about, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want the Treasury to bring a resolution at the next meeting?
If he could.
He's got a draft. We're already working.
Oh, Mr. Hart?
Well, we're talking about, the existing one is gonna expire, so we were talking about that.
So we, yeah, we've gotta, we've gotta update the existing one, but we can certainly incorporate this request for consideration. That's me. So we got a motion. Is there a second?
We'll wait.
So I should want?
No, this is a resolution. One second.
Can't hear about the resolution yet.
Okay.
But there are no objections to vote. We're gonna vote to agree the resolution. Do we need to vote?
No, you wouldn't need to vote for that right now.
Are there objections to the reform draft though? No.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Second.
Your second?
All of us in favor? There's a motion to adjourn. It's a lot of things.